All right, welcome back to our open session. Again, as a reminder, our meeting is being recorded and broadcast on ACTN TV's YouTube channel and will be available at ACTN TV's website at actntv.org. Chairs, welcome, that's where we're at. So, welcome, everybody. This is officially my last meeting as Chair. It's been an absolute pleasure for the past two years to serve as Chair of this committee. You know, as I've shared with some of you before, when we talk with other chairs from around the Commonwealth and share what some of the challenges and benefits are that they see in running their meetings, first of all, I'm always sure to remind everybody that the Chair of the ACTN Boxborough Regional School Committee gets to herd 11 cats at their meeting, and most people are amazed that we're able to do that. Additionally, we have some great protocols and procedures in place. We have a great working relationship. I know that sometimes there are disagreements amongst this committee, but every meeting ends amicably. And what I will also tell you is an amazing change from four years ago when I chaired the first time. The level of engagement of this committee is absolutely phenomenal, and I really appreciate every one of you for what you bring to the meeting and how you participate. And again, there are times where we don't agree, but everyone gets to say their piece, everyone's voice is heard. Same from the community's perspective. I know there were some challenges in the past around public participation. I think that for the past few years, the participation and the information that we've gotten from the public has not only been respectful, but also really informative and helpful to this committee. So, in addition to thanking the committee for the past two years, I want to thank the public, the teachers, the community, and especially I want to thank Peter. Peter's been an amazing thought partner for me over the past few years as we sit in our weekly meetings and talk about how we're going to present this material, sometimes really confusing and complicated content to you as a committee. He's a great person to sort of exchange and spitball with. He's talked me off the ledge a couple times. I think I might have talked him off the ledge a couple times, so I appreciate all that you've brought to this for me as well, Peter, so thank you. All right, with that, public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, since we just met last week, we are not going to have another superintendent's update, and we're going to move on to our ongoing business. First item of ongoing business is the vote to approve the ACTN Boxborough Regional Schools' vision of a graduate. We had a wonderful presentation last week. Any questions or comments or additional feedback on that? Glenn.
I do have a comment. I have a little statement. As a school committee, we rightly highlight our students' academic and athletic achievements. I feel it would also be wise for educators and community members next school year to be on the lookout for students who exemplify and embody the traits we're seeking our students to demonstrate once they graduate: adaptability, communication, collaboration, intellectual curiosity, and integrity. Being able to highlight student stories of those who excel in these traits would help demonstrate to the community what exactly we mean when we talk about this vision we have for our graduates. I feel we need to spell things out very directly. This vision isn't meant to just be some boxes to check, it's meant for us to embody, and I strongly feel highlighting the human stories behind that will benefit the community. For example, last meeting during public comment, the captain of the high school Nordic team, Shay Bernard, spoke persuasively advocating for a change in the PE requirement where participating in one after-school sport should fill that requirement. In the vision of a graduate, Bullet Point 3 states that a student shall be able to understand their role in and actively contribute to their communities. Shay knocked it out of the park with that by identifying an inefficiency in our policies and advocating effectively for herself and her friends before this committee. I hope other students follow her lead and continue to engage with us. Stories like Students of Shay being civically engaged in our community is a perfect example of how this vision of a graduate can be exemplified and demonstrated effectively. I urge educators and community members to be on the lookout for students like Shay who embody our vision, and I urge this committee to highlight their stories once we hear more of them.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, so in my ever-ongoing pursuit to help better our committee, I'm just going to point out tonight, we have a lot of votes, and there is vote-motion language in our agenda, so instead of me asking for motions on all of these, I'm just going to leave it to you guys. If anybody would like to read the motion in the agenda, I'd gladly accept one.
I move to adopt the ACTN Boxborough Regional School District vision of a graduate.
Second.
So that was Liz with the motion and Tori with the second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, on to the next item. Approval of the transfer of $2.1 million from the district's excess and deficiency fund to the district's capital improvement fund. We received some information from Sherri about that last week, and there's a memo again in the packet on that. Any questions or comments on this first financial vote?
Do you want Sherri to give like a two-sentence reminder?
Sherri, you want to give us a two-sentence reminder?
Sure. Just reminding you that we received a check from the IRS tax rebate for $2.9 million, and in an effort to not go over the 5% that we can't go over at the end of the year for END, we are asking the committee to move $2.1 million into the capital CIP revolving fund.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the transfer of $2,100,000 from the certified excess and deficiency account into the capital improvement revolving account.
Second.
That was Tori with the motion and Lila with the second. Pause here, any last discussion on that item?
My last piece of discussion is one more time expressing deep gratitude to the Facilities Department, especially Kate Crosby, for getting this funding, and I look forward to us scraping some more grant funding out of that building.
With that, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? That is unanimous. On to the next budget vote. This is an approval to amend the FY26 budget to reflect the additional anticipated state revenues and also to reduce the assessments to the two towns by a total of $150,000. This will restore or add some student-facing positions that were not funded in the budget adopted at the town meetings. Sherri, another quick two-second update on this one?
Sure. The state funding, the actual state funding that is additional is $387,890, so after the 150 that we're giving back to the communities, it's $237,890. And you all should have had a paper in front of you with the very, very long, had their red on it. This is sadly what needs to be read in order to vote.
Yep, so just a couple of us have this, and Liz has already been voluntold that she'll be reading this one.
All right, tuck in, Kate.
Before we make the motion, hold on. Any last questions or comments from the committee on our budget amendment? So as a reminder, we're increasing our overall budget, and I'm going to say this twice for our town select board members and finance committees, we are increasing our overall budget while at the same time reducing the assessments to both towns. So it's good news on both sides. We're restoring positions and we're saving the towns some money. Any questions or comments on that?
I do actually have a question, just for clarification. So this is going to reset our baseline budget for next year as well, correct?
Indeed it will, but that baseline budget reset is based on reoccurring funds that we get through Chapter 70, so it's not like we're using one-time funds to increase our budget artificially, which is what happened last year and how we brought our budget back down last year.
Correct. All I'm pointing out is that if we get, you know, linear from here to there, once we get to next budget season, we don't have the money for these positions that we're able to restore. So I just want our towns to know that it's not like this is gifted free money that's going to be there forever.
It is, in fact, gifted free money. So all of the positions that we've restored are reflective of the additional Chapter 70 funding that is an annual reoccurring money. So we're not adding any positions with one-time funds. I'll say that one more time.
Oh, all right, great.
We are not adding any positions with one-time funds. All the positions we're restoring are with reoccurring funds as part of our baseline budget from the state.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you for seeking that clarification.
Yes.
Last questions or comments? Seeing none, Liz.
All right, with that, I move that the committee adopt the amended budget of the ACTN Boxborough Regional School District the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 as presented in the amount of $117,29,54, which is reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the following amounts: anticipated Chapter 70 aid in the amount of $17,209,71; anticipated state transportation aid in the amount of $2,610,132; anticipated state charter school aid in the amount of $60,812; anticipated Medicaid reimbursement of $200,000; anticipated investment earnings of $300,000; estimated miscellaneous revenues of $23,500; and transfers from the following district reserves: excess and deficiency fund in the amount of $0; capital stabilization fund in the amount of $0 for a net amount to be assessed to member towns in accordance with the education reform law and the terms of the regional agreement and amendments thereto as follows: ACTN, $79,835,434, consisting of a capital assessment of $4,656,988, and an operating assessment of $75,178,446; and Boxborough, $16,798,205, consisting of a capital assessment of $977,302, in an operating assessment of $15,820,902.
Second.
Thank you, Liz, for the motion, and Tori for the second. This vote requires two-thirds of all school committee members. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'm fairly certain that, including the people who are absent today, we still made the two-thirds majority vote on that, so thank you. And one last time, a very big thank you to all of our community members, teachers, staff, school committee members, for the advocacy that you did to help increase our budget for this year. We plan on continuing that advocacy as we move into next year. All right, next item is the approval of a 10-year municipal bond for the Boardwalk Campus. Again, we got a preview of this last week. Sherri, you want to give us another overview?
This is our final borrowing for the Boardwalk Campus project. We had gone out with a $5 million ban the last two years, and we are going to take the remaining balance that we have on the expense side, as well as what we had to go out for a bond and pay off the ban. It is a 10-year ban. Standard and Poor's had reconfirmed that the district's credit rating was AAA, and the low bid, we got seven bids that came in, the low bid came from Fidelity Capital Markets at 3.029% for the 10 years, so we are looking for the committee to approve the $3,530,000 long-term debt borrowing in order to pay off the $5 million ban.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? I will once again remind the committee and the community that when we went out and bonded the original building project, the bond subcommittee that we had at the time went out and received, decided to bond all of that in advance. A lot of these projects do get bonded at the end. We bonded in advance, we got an extremely favorable rate, and I think the last time we looked at this, we saved the communities roughly $30 million in interest by bonding the majority of the school building early on, and so this is the last of that borrowing. And again, we did a wonderful job. Thank you to our advisors, to our treasurer, to the finance team for giving us a great rate on that. So inside the memo, there is a motion. Would anyone like to listen to Lila make that motion?
Move to accept the results of the sale of the $3,530,000 general obligation bond, and the language is written and provided by Bond Council, Troutman, Pepper, and Locke. That was in our school committee packet.
Second.
All right, that was Lila with the motion and Tori again with the second. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We have one abstention from Lakshmi. All right, let's see where we are now. The approval of the creation of a health insurance stabilization account, another quick intro, Sherri.
Sure. According to Mass General Law, we had to go out, actually, let me back up. The Health Insurance Trust gave us a check for $619,600, and that is going to be put into END at the end of the year, and what we are looking to do is create a health insurance stabilization account to put aside some funds in the fall, once it's certified, in the event that we have an overabundance of employees that sign up for insurance that we did not budget. So we have already gone to the select board, I mean, yeah, select board, and made sure that they both approved, both ACTN and Boxborough approved, the making of this, and now we need the school committee to approve the creation of a health insurance stabilization fund.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Anyone wish to make a motion?
I move to approve the creation of a new health insurance stabilization account for the ACTN Boxborough Regional School District.
Second. So that was Liz with the motion, and I made the second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous as well. All right, chugging right along. We have a memorandum of agreement with the ACTN Boxborough Education Association. Andrew, you want to give us a quick update on what this is?
Sure. Yeah, a quick update is that we have been working with the high school ABA representatives on our plan to implement duties for high school teachers as part of their role and responsibilities starting next school year. And as part of that discussion in terms of the implementation, we entered into a conversation around sort of how the contours of their roles and responsibilities might be looked at in context of adding duties next year, and so we discussed some ideas to mitigate some of the additional elements of their role, and as a result of that, came to an agreement around some other features of their school day and their work responsibilities that we feel offers a good balance in service of a change that I think is viewed as fairly substantial. I think they're all going to be, they are all going to be doing duties during the course of the week, and that adds a substantial number of hours of service towards meeting goals that we have in terms of the safety and supervision of the school building, and so therefore, some of the things that we felt comfortable offering and agreeing to are in the MOU. And as you'll see if you review them, they really do have to do with time, so it really does make sense in terms of what we're asking them to take on and therefore helping to sort of balance it, are all related to time-related requests. So happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions from the committee? All right, seeing none. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to accept the annual summative.
No, sorry.
Nope, sorry, wrong one.
What, Liz, would you like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the ACTN Boxborough Education Association?
I would, so moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Liz with a wonderful motion, and Tori with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? That is unanimous, thank you. All right, now we're on to the superintendent's annual summative review, Adam Klein, as it says in our agenda. So I am, I have the pleasure, actually, that's what it says right here, so I'm going to read the memo that's in our packet so that it can get recorded officially. Sit back, folks, it's going to be fun. "It is my pleasure for the fourth year in a row to provide a summary of the performance evaluations for Superintendent Peter Light. The members of the school committee each submitted an evaluation based on the DESRiE rubric. It provides a consistent format for school committees to evaluate the superintendent's work towards their goals and across four standards of practice. In support of their evaluations, Peter shared with the committee some highlights and his own reflection for improvements from the past year. Additionally, he shared updates and evidence for this year's goals. This document is intended to summarize the individual comments of the committee. As an introduction, being evaluated by 11 school committee members, each with their own lens and priorities, is a uniquely challenging process, especially when that evaluation is shared publicly. Unlike most professional settings where performance reviews are private and often conducted by a single supervisor, this process requires a high degree of transparency, resilience, and grace. We commend Superintendent Light for his patience, professionalism, and openness throughout, and for his continued commitment to leading our district with clarity, empathy, and steadfast focus on educational and operational excellence. Under standard number one, instructional leadership, Superintendent Light has demonstrated proficiency in instructional leadership, marked by a clear strategic vision and a commitment to equity and academic excellence. His leadership in the vision of a graduate initiative and implementation of standards-based inclusive criteria has aligned instructional practices across the district. He has strengthened the use of data to inform instruction, particularly through MTSS and tools like Thought Exchange and Forefront. His focus on chronic absenteeism and subgroup achievement gaps reflect a data-driven approach to improving student outcomes. Committee members report a culture of continuous improvement, supported by professional learning and responsive instructional practices. A majority of the committee rated the superintendent as proficient." Standard two, management and operations. Mr. Light has effectively managed complex operational challenges, including budget constraints, staffing reductions, and evolving state mandates. His fiscal leadership has been transparent and strategic, resulting in a balanced FY26 budget and successful advocacy for increased state funding. He has maintained robust safety protocols, expanded mental health supports, and implemented systems to safeguard student data. His leadership in sustainability and cybersecurity has earned state and national recognition. While some concerns remain about the impact of budget cuts on scheduling and collaboration, Mr. Light's operational management is rated as exemplary by a majority of the committee. Standard three, family and community engagement. Mr. Light has significantly expanded family and community engagement through inclusive practices and transparent communication. Initiatives like the Leadership Coalition, Absentee Task Force, and the Elementary Budget Task Force have brought diverse voices into district decision-making. He has prioritized outreach to multilingual families and used tools like Parent Square to improve accessibility. His leadership has fostered trust and responsiveness, though some feedback suggests continued work is needed to deepen engagement with underrepresented groups. Overall, his efforts have strengthened partnerships and created a more inclusive school community. A majority of the committee rated the superintendent as proficient. Standard four, professional culture. Peter Light has cultivated a professional culture grounded in equity, cultural proficiency, and shared vision. He has led restorative practices training, implemented anti-bias protocols, and supported culturally responsive teaching. His leadership and vision of a graduate process and strategic planning has engaged a broad range of stakeholders. Committee members consistently describe him as empathetic, reflective, and committed to respectful dialogue. Despite budgetary pressures, he has maintained a focus on staff development and student well-being, modeling the values of inclusivity and continuous improvement. A majority of the committee rated the superintendent as exemplary. Overall evaluator comments. Evaluators unanimously commend Mr. Light's leadership as a strategic, inclusive, and deeply aligned with district goals. He is recognized for his ability to navigate complex challenges with integrity, empathy, and a focus on student success. His communication is clear and consistent, and his responsiveness to feedback has strengthened community trust. Challenges remain, particularly around budget constraints and sustaining engagement. Mr. Light's overall performance is rated as exemplary by a majority of the school committee. His leadership is seen as a critical asset as the district enters a new phase of strategic planning and restructuring. On behalf of the committee, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to Superintendent Peter Light for his great work this year. We look forward to continuing working with you in the years to come. With that, please, would you like to make a comment, Peter?
So, you know, first, I want to thank the committee for the evaluation and, you know, all of the support. As I've said to you before, you know, the years seem to be getting harder as they go, not easier. I will say, and I think I've probably said this every year, but I feel as though when I hear the evaluation, all of the great things that you highlight are because other people did great work, and when you highlight the challenges, it's because I missed an opportunity to do something. So, you know, I just want to recognize, you know, the work of all of our central office leadership team, all of our principals, and, you know, quite honestly, where all of the strategic work we do meets our students, it's because our educators are doing that work in the classroom every day, and so I just want to express, you know, really heartfelt gratitude to educators who are doing this work in schools every day. I know their lives are not getting easier as the years go on. I don't think anyone that I've ever met says teaching has gotten easier, particularly over the last five years, it's very, very complex, and so, you know, the work you see being done at the district is done because our educators are doing it. You know, it's our job to put that work together in a way that can be coherent for people, but the work has to get done, and it only gets done because of educators. So thank you to our educators, thank you to all of the principals, school leaders, central office leaders who contribute to everything, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to accept the annual summative review for Superintendent Peter Light dated June 12th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
That was Lila with the motion and Tori with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous, thank you. All right, next item is discussion of the superintendent's FY26 salary. With the committee's permission, I'll give a quick summary of what our discussion was. All right, so we did meet in executive session to discuss the superintendent's salary. As you heard, a majority of the committee did rate the superintendent as exemplary in his performance for this year, and it is my recollection that that's the first time in Peter's seven-year tenure that he has received an exemplary rating, so that played and weighed heavily in the committee's deliberation. The committee did discuss a salary for Peter, and what I will say was, when that was presented, Peter asked that the salary that we were offering above and beyond the increase that the rest of the senior leadership team be distributed back to that senior leadership team. So, again, as Peter expressed his gratitude to all of the administrators and leadership team and educators who help support the amazing work that gets done here, he, you know, gracefully and graciously asked that anything that the committee wanted to give him above and beyond what the rest of the senior leadership was receiving be distributed back out to that team. So I think the committee was surprised that he negotiated down his salary, but we're very grateful to be able to give some of that compensation and appreciation back to the rest of the senior leadership team. And so with that, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's, sorry, to set the salary for the superintendent at $256,602 for FY26?
So moved.
Lakshmi made the second, Tori made the motion on that. I'll pause right here, any further discussion or comments before we take the vote? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, Subcommittee and Member Reports. So we did have a Strategic Planning and Reorganization Steering Committee meeting, and Peter, could you give us a brief update of that and announce our new and simpler name?
Absolutely, thanks, Adam. So, you know, we talked about the fact that, you know, the name Strategic Planning and Reorganization Steering Committee may not be as inspiring to members of the community as it is to us, and that, you know, we wanted to think a little bit differently about the work, and also really highlight what this work is actually about, quite honestly. But in all seriousness, it's more about making sure the name we give to the group actually is reflective of the work that the group is doing. And so the group adopted the title AB Forward with the subtext "Shaping Our Future Together." So, you know, I want to thank the discussion we had in Steering Committee. We did reach out, there was some dialogue in that group, whether to use the name, you know, "Planning Our Future Together" or "Shaping," I did reach out to some native speakers in other languages just to understand, you know, how the translation would work, and we ended up settling on "Shaping" because we thought it was a more inviting word than "Planning," and more reflective of a community process. So we had our meeting on June 11th, and the Steering Committee AB Forward, excuse me, it was on June 10th, focused on reviewing and approving minutes from the May 27th meeting and addressing public comments. Joe Costello from District Management Group provided updates on stakeholder engagement, including preliminary interviews, community surveys, and focus groups. The committee discussed the strategic planning framework, emphasizing prioritization and actionable steps. They planned to launch a community survey on June 12th, which was launched earlier today, to gather feedback on the district's strengths, challenges, and strategic plan. Survey is going to be open until July 11th. We will monitor that, just in case we're getting low turnout for some reason, we'll be flexible with how we treat that end date. Next meeting is scheduled for August 25th, so we don't have meetings of the Steering Committee during that time, where we will be reviewing the results of those diagnostic findings and focusing on a draft of the mission, vision, and theory of action. You know, one thing that we did discuss in addition to this is forming a smaller working group out of that that can actually draft some of the language of the mission, vision, theory of action. As I shared with you last time, one of the things we learned during the vision of a graduate process is 20 people cannot sit around a table and agree on language, so you actually need a smaller group to do that, so we'll be forming that group. I'm connecting with Joe Costello tomorrow to get some dates. I'm connecting with Joe Costello tomorrow to get some dates so that we can start that process. I think one other thing that we emphasized is, there's really two phases to this entire project for AB Forward. The first phase is really around the strategic plan, and that's what we're working on right now. That is doing a diagnostic of the strengths of the schools, areas for growth, opportunities that we have in front of us, and that's going to be done through stakeholder engagement through this initial survey, as well as District Management Group really digging into a lot of the data and information that we have inside of our schools to be able to highlight, you know, kind of our top strengths and challenges that we want to work on. That is phase one of the project. When we move into phase two, we're really actually talking about the fall, from mid-September through December, where we're going to be talking about the idea of potential reorganizational principles that we might think for our schools. So want to be clear that what we're doing now in the survey that we're sending out is around the strategic planning process, and when we come back in the fall, that's when we'll start to introduce possible concepts for reorganization, and we have multiple ways to engage stakeholders, from surveys to small focus groups through workshops around getting more feedback on those proposed set of reorganizational principles. So lots of work being done behind the scenes. Steering Committee is off and running, and know that we're really, you know, we've got to roll up our sleeves when we come back in August, because then August through December is really the work plan. Happy to, Tori, Yanshun, Adam, anything else that you would add from that?
Maybe just one thought. So as we talk about those two phases, I think what's most important there is you can't talk about reorganizing until you know what you're reorganizing for. And so there's a lot of, there's already a lot of discussion out in the community that's focused on that part, and I think we just need to remind everybody that until we know what the strategic plan is, we really can't figure out how to organize to meet it.
I will also just add, we're working really hard, that we try to update the website with information within 48 hours after each meeting so that, you know, members of the community can understand what happened, at least a high-level summary. And then we have been working to develop kind of like social media templates to be able to get information out on both Facebook and Instagram, so you'll, you've probably started to see that. Thanks to Lila for showing me how to use Linktree to add links in bio for Instagram. I never knew anything about it. I think I purposely buried my head in the sand around Instagram, but excited to, for new learning opportunities. You know, and, you know, we initiated the survey today. Within an hour, we had about 50 responses, so seems like it's of high interest, at least so far. And then, you know, the last thing I will say, I actually have a short video explaining what we're doing with this, that will be going out tomorrow via social media as well. So that's it.
Yeah, I do have one thing to add, which is, first of all, no decisions have been made about how we will restructure the schools, but, but secondly and most importantly, we are the main conduit to our communities to explain to them what's going on. We will have some QR codes, we'll have some flyers coming out. We want to be able to share those at all the community events that are happening. It's really about not just performatively getting community engagement, but being very persistent about asking everybody, have you filled the survey out? Do you know what it is? Get as many people, this is the opportunity to get that input and, and make sure that everyone has a voice in this first round. And then there will be, as was, was shared with us, there's then a second round of, after that information is digested, distilled, and discussed around the steering committee, another round that goes out for feedback with the community. So lots of opportunities for the community. Glenn?
I have two thoughts. One is I just, I, I do want to echo what you said, that we have to meet people where they, we have to meet the community where they're at with this process, which means like, we, we're in our own circle here, and like, oh, we know this, we know that, like, most of the community doesn't know the basics of this. So, and that's not their fault, it's, it's a complex subject. So I think just prioritizing breaking this down in as simple, as easy-to-understand language as possible is a priority. That's one thing that I agree with. Second thing is that with the video, and I do think we should lean into video, I would recommend that that get distributed to the Facebook groups in particular. Acton Parents and Acton Community Forum are the biggest ones, that's where most of the eyeballs are. And that's my, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, just that the district generally puts things on their pages. It is then our responsibility, if we so wish, to share it into those groups.
You, you can share, there's a page, and then you can share the pages posted to a group via a profile. Easy, right? But...
And, you know, just one other point of clarification, like, from a social media standpoint, we post information out to social media. We allow people to comment because, you know, we, we invite community input on that. We don't respond to comments. By way of practice, community members can respond to each other's comments, but we don't. And then from a school committee standpoint, it's also important to know that it's really difficult to respond to comments unless you're simply providing like a factual link back to a district resource, because this is something that does become part of what you will vote on, and so that can be construed as a deliberation. So I just want to, as we get going on this and you see lots of public comments going around, just urge caution about what and how we reply to things.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any subcommittee, I don't think we met in the past week, any subcommittees, any liaison updates that they want to share? All right, seeing none. We have a school committee communication goal update. Liz, where are we at on Pfeiffer's Day planning?
Pfeiffer's Day will be on Saturday, June 21st, and I had been waiting for the Strategic Planning Committee to meet. Poor Peter is going to get hounded from me right after this meeting to be like, hey, what things can I print to do there? I will still be there all day, and I will, I forgot to send out the signup sheet for you guys for last week, so I will have that to you no later than Saturday morning.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other updates? Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. So as a reminder, items on the consent agenda don't usually require discussion, approved with one vote unless a member would like something held. If you would like it held, just say hold, and you don't have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. So, item A, approval of ABRSC meeting minutes of 6/5/2025.
Hold.
That's been held. Item B, the FY25 budget transfers. Item C, AB Friends of Music $2,000 donation to the music department for a drum set and bass amp. The item D, Eastern Bank Foundation $2,000 grant donation to the Community Education Summer Day Program scholarships. And item E, Regeneron Science Talent Search $6,000 award check to ABRHS. All right, so we had item A held. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items B, C, D, and E?
So moved.
Moved.
So Lila made the motion, and Lisa made the second on that one. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimous. So we're back to the ABRSC meeting minutes of 6/5/2025. Lila, you asked for those to be held.
Yeah, sorry to notice this earlier. 3C, it has a moved and a seconded and that it carried, but there's no vote under it.
All right, hold on a second. I just can't get that attachment to open right now. So item 3C has a moved by Ben, seconded by, and then there is no conclusion of the vote.
It says it carried. There's just no roll call added in there.
Gotcha. Oh, there's no roll call for the rest of it.
No, there isn't.
Okay. So we could amend that, could we just amend that to say it was carried unanimously? Because the, the only thing that did not pass unanimously was the handbook. We don't need to put each member's vote on there for an item like that. So we could amend that to make it say it carried unanimously, or we could pull it and vote it on our next meeting and actually put the names in. My personal recommendation would be the first. Discussion? Tori?
Also true for 6G, so I wonder if that's just how we were reflecting things that were unanimous, and if we need...
I can just...
It's, we don't always actually list out the individual votes as roll call unless there are differing votes.
Never mind then. Move to approve item A. Second.
So Lila made a motion to approve the school committee minutes of June 5th, 2025. Tori seconded that. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. So let me get back here. Anything to highlight in the FYI, Peter?
Actually, a relatively exciting item. We received our CHIP certification, which is the collaborative for high-performing schools, which was part of the design of the Boardwalk Campus. You may have heard of LEED certification for high-performing buildings. CHIP certification, we actually went for, which is a more rigorous standard, because it's not just the design of the building, it's actually about how it's being used as well. And we had instituted a number of policies and procedures along the way to make sure that we were eligible for that. So we received our certification, and that is very exciting.
Excellent. Thank you. It's the school that just keeps giving, that Boardwalk Campus. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn my last committee meeting as chair.
So moved.
With gratitude, second.
All right. So that was, motion was made by Liz, Yanshun made the second. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you.